Retiree social. First of all, wow. Congratulations on such a great achievement. You are. What a great accomplishment for having the law to work and being able to stop. Take a breath, okay? I'm approaching that time and I'm not sure what that's right. So, I started thinking about it, thought, where can I find some information about retirement? So, I went to Google, and if you know, you know how Google. So, this is what I found out about retirement. I wanted to get some information and perspective of what retirement could be like. So, this is what I found out. When you retire, you switch bosses from the one that hired you to the one that married you. Retirement means you stop lying about your age and you start lying around the house. No? So, that would be wrong?
I guess it's another counter.
Retirement is wonderful. It's doing nothing without worrying about getting caught. Who's guilty? Retirement pay isn't great, but the hours are fantastic. Okay, and this is my favorite, and this is what I look forward to in retirement. I came ready to retire so I can get up early, about 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, and go drive around real slow to make everybody else late for it. I think everyone want to join me. Great, great. So, now I'm going to ask all of you, how is retirement? Great? Is something we should all try to achieve? All right, so tonight, before we get on with the presentation of our awards to you guys, I want to recognize Ms. Paul Verog, my secretary, who actually put this all together for you guys. I'd also like to take it on to thank Frau Boujot, Principal of TES, that allows us the use of her beautiful hands. At this time, what I'd like to do is turn this over to Dr. Robert. Have a word with you guys and then we'll talk about ourselves.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Congratulations to each and every one of you. We dearly appreciate the service that you've given to our school district in the multiple different capacities that you've done so over the years. And we've got, we'll throw some numbers of years out a little bit later on, we're told that it's pretty amazing the amount of service that's been given to the Forest Parish School District by our honorees and retirees here this season. So, I can't thank you enough, you know, for the dedication that you've given to our district, to all our students, to one another at the school level, because I know you build relationships, you know, amongst adults just as well as you do amongst, you know, children in the school. And, you know, some of you, I think we've got somebody in here with my board, it's pretty amazing to be able to do that, you know, for that number of years and that amount of time. But, with that being said, I hope you enjoy, you know, a little meal and a little comfort food before we get started with the program. We do have a board meeting after this tonight, so we're going to go ahead and get started. But again, thank you for all the time, all the dedication, all the heart, the blood, the sweat, the tears, and everything else that goes along when reaching the point that you are at today. So, with that being said, we'll get started with the awards part.
Okay, and what we'll do is we'll have to sweep our supervisory staff to get up and begin calling out for...
And before I do that, at this time, I do want to ask Ms. Brooke Huddleston, our Board President, to come up as well and also introduce our school board members that are here with us tonight. Ms. Huddleston is our Board President, and we also have, if y'all can stand, as I call your name, Mr. Troy Dufrenk, Tina Babin, Dr. Mary Bro, Mr. Randy Schwess, Mr. Barry Plazons, Mr. Ray Bernard, Ms. Marion Petita, Mr. Al Archer, Ms. Valerie Boujot. And so, thank you to all of our board members for being present with you with us tonight as well. And we've got several of our central office staff members, you see them coming up as well, if y'all could please stand as well. With that, we'll go ahead and get started.
So, starting off, we have supervisor, Mr. Robbie Lee, who can introduce our supervisory staff.
All right, and good evening. It's truly a pleasure to be with you this evening, and I want to congratulate all of you. And at this time, we will start with our supervisory staff who have retired, and those individuals are: Communication Specialist, Mr. Floyd Benoit; Assistant Supervisor of Curriculum, Ms. Karen Gisclaire; Superintendent, Dr. Joy Edmack. This group was a total of 103 total years of experience.
When this group comes up, we'll get the whole group in for a big group picture on of each category, characters as a group by ourselves.
That's right. All right, now our school administration. Assistant Principal, Ms. Julie Carrier; Assistant Principal, Ms. Janet Conrad; Assistant Principal, Ms. Donna Pierce; and Principal, Ms. Diane Smith. This group was a total of 107 years of experience. Congratulations, ladies. Our next group, we are teachers. We have Ms. Arlene Hudro, Ms. Lisa Crow, Mr. Richard Chesso, Cynthia Clark, Ms. Tammy Degrees, John Gaujour, Ms. Celeste Glover, Julie Robert, Julie Pedros, Kelly Hutchinson, Ms. Olega Leslie, Debbie Ogel, Mr. Kyle Fett, Ms. Jill Alfred, Ms. Mary Ann Dorvus, Ms. Millie White. It's a collective total of 457 years of experience. Congratulations. All right, our next group will be our paraprofessionals. Yeah, this was Tilda Benoit, Ms. Emma Boyd, Ms. Darlene Delon, Ms. Genevieve Duane, she's here. Ms. Deborah Giabingo, Ms. Lynn Jackson, Ms. Lorraine Langer, Ms. Dejean Nixon, Ms. Kim Trostclaire. And this was a total of 208.5 years of experience. Congratulations. And our last group that I have tonight is our office personnel, and we have Ms. Arlene Bro, School Secretary, and Ms. Ramona Fox, School Secretary. And this was a total of 77 total years of experience.
And with that, we go to the announcement of the retirement.
The pupil appraisal staff has three retirees this year. Our nurse, Mary Ann Moudery, our end diocese, Dishon, Julie Nielsen.
Announcing a media center retiree, this is Tiffany Block.
So, we have one retiree this year, Ms. Jamie Chadwick. She was unable to make it tonight, but I just wanted to acknowledge her. Thank you.
Our next presenter is Mr. Chris Campbell, and he will be introducing IT.
I'm going to be introducing IT. We have one that will be retiring from IT. She was unable to make it, Ms. Corinne Brockman. She has 22 years of experience. I'm also going to announce the maintenance retirees. We have two maintenance personnel that are retiring. Both of them did not make it tonight. Mr. Ernest Delon and Ms. Bridget Tuhan, for a total of 29, 28 years.
Mountain Transportation retirees, Mr. Mitch Lam.
Transportation, we have Ms. Martha Adams, Ms. Patricia Adams, Ms. Carolyn Picture, Ms. Suzie Rishaw, Ms. Jacqueline Scheck Snyder, Ms. Deja Timido, Ms. Gail Pedreen, and Ms. Mary Walker. For a combined 167 years of experience.
Announcing Challenging Education retirees, this is Laura.
Good evening. We have three employees in the Challenging Education Department that retired this year. We have Ms. Janelle Goday, Pool Service Technician, who worked for us at NCO. We have Ms. Jenny Nakamp, Pool Service Technician, who worked for us at WS Far. And here with us tonight is beautiful lady who had the pleasure of supervising, is Linda Roos, with 26 and a half years with Old Matt Middle. And she has 250 years with those three ladies and more than half of them are assistants and ladies.
Now, we had some folks, I'm assuming, retiring as vacation, which pretty much happens every year in June where, you know, we've got some folks who can't make it. But I do want to point out to you that of all the names that we called tonight, the total years of experience for the collective group of retirees is 1,307 years of experience involved. That by far, you know, says a lot, you know, you have that many years of experience involved. At this time, I would like to call upon Ms. Beth Plazons, who is the president of the local Retiree Teachers Association, would like to speak a few words to our new retirees.
Thank you, Paul. Congratulations. Retirement is a wonderful thing, especially first day of school. I want to introduce Bryn the Gothron and Yvonne Wyman, they are our vice presidents for the Forest Parish Retired Teachers Association. We are an organization who tries to keep in touch with each other. We work on issues that are important to retirees because, as I learned, as I just became a retired, I don't want to work for the school board. There's nobody out there to protect me from the legislature. And the legislature can be an evil thing, as I'm discovering. But anyway, we look at things that are of interest to retirees, especially our, you know, benefits, how we can protect it. Do you know, obviously, retired, you don't have the pay state taxes on that. Nice, that's a benefit. But if the state gets hold of us, we'll change links with the state. Ah, they can get rid of us. So, it's important for you to keep informed, to stay informed, to join the local union, and to join the state organization, which is known as the Retiree Teachers Association. And I'm sure many of you have already received information from them. Hi, I'm going to use afternoon. Sorry, I said this one again. Thank you, Carl. Another thing that we do is we get together four times a year and we have meetings on guest speakers. Our last meeting was in April, we had Mr. Paul and his...
I'd like to call this meeting to order, invocation by Mr. Dennis Ghiatt, District State, and pledge allegiance, find it to our...
Lord, your promise is that you are in our midst when we gather in prayer. This belief prompts us to call upon you to guide us tonight toward a path that is in the best interest of our students and the educators who are guiding them. We pray that you watch over our children who will be out of school for the summer, keep them safe, protect them in all their ways, grant that they acquire maturity that will make them ready to return to school with renewed spirit and enthusiasm. We ask this in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Right allegiance to the Father. In the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, God, individual, the religion of us all.
We'll call.
Ms. Babin.
Here.
Ms. Huddleston.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Petita.
Here.
Dr. Bro.
Here.
Dr. Ghiatt.
Here.
Ms. Boujot.
Here.
Mr. Tyler Dufrenk.
Here.
Mr. Schwess.
Here.
Mr. Plazons.
Here.
Mr. Duplanders.
Yes.
Mr. Gisclaire.
U of K, he may not be here this evening.
Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Demore.
Here.
E, Policy on Public Participation. Ms. Boujot.
I move that we dispense with the reading of the policy. It is posted on the wall.
I have motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes, seconded by Mr. Troy Dufrenk. Everybody in favor? Can we do a hand vote? Looks like everybody's in favor. No nays, we'll dispense with reading Policy on Public Participation. Two, Approval of Board Consent Agenda. A, Approval of Board Consent Agenda Items. B, Minutes of Regular Board Meeting held Wednesday, May 1, 2019. C, Minutes of Land and Facilities Management Committee Meeting held Tuesday, May 14, 2019. D, Minutes of Insurance Committee Meeting held Tuesday, May 14, 2019. E, Minutes of Finance Committee Meeting held Tuesday, May 14, 2019. And F, Minutes of Advisory Committee Meeting held Monday, June 3, 2019. Do I have a motion to accept? I have a motion by Ms. Marion Petita, seconded by Dr. Dennis Ghiatt. Any discussion of any of the items? Any comments? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. C, Approval of Land and Facilities Management Committee Meeting Recommendations as per meeting held Tuesday, May 14, 2019. Dr. Bayron? Bayron, excuse me.
Mr. Gisclaire, if he's not here at the moment. Mr. Bernard, you're on land and facilities, would you read those recommendations from land and facilities?
Okay, here we go. Okay, to accept a change of arguing in the amount of $17,646, a change of floor glue from standard glue to the easy on 100 glue for the value blue upper elementary school project.
Motion by Mr. Ray Bernard, seconded by Mr. Barry Plazons. Is there any discussion? Any discussion by the board? Any comments from the audience? If not, we'll vote.
B, To accept a budget increase from $2,200,000 to $2,400,000 for the value blue elementary school administration, by the consulting.
Motion by Mr. Ray Bernard, seconded by Mr. Randy Schwess. Is there any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. C.
I have a C, to accept a wide entry from Forest Parish Government and Department of Transportation and Development, instruct sidewalks through race and upper elementary school, race and middle school, value blue elementary school, value blue upper elementary school, and value blue middle school for the purpose of safe school sidewalks.
Motion by Mr. Mary Bernard, seconded by Mr. Tyler Dufrenk. Is there any discussion by the board? Any questions or comments from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Four, Approval of Finance Committee Recommendations as per meeting held Tuesday, May 14, 2019. Mr. Barry Plazons. I'm sorry, Dr. Mary Bro, making the insurance. Sorry. I apologize, Dr. Bro.
A, To accept the low bid received from LaFlore Dairy Products for milk and milk products effective for the 2019-2020 school year, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Ms. Marion Petita. Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? Not will vote. Motion passes unanimously. B.
B, To accept the low bid received from Flowers Baking Company for bread effective for the 2019-2020 school year, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Ms. Tina Babin. Any discussion by the board? Any discussion from the audience? Not will vote. Motion passes unanimously.
C, To accept the low bid received from the recommended vendors for food products, food classes 3, 5, 7, 8, 9, effective for the 2019-2020 school year, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Ms. Cheryl Thomas. Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? Not will vote. Motion passes unanimously.
D, To accept the low bid received from economical janitors and paper supplies for janitorial and paper products effective for the 2019-2020 school year, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Burrow, second by Mr. Joey Duplantis. Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
E, to accept the low bid received from Joe Septon Contractors Incorporated for cleaning and cleaning jobs effective for the 2019-2020 school year, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Burrow, second by Ms. Marion Petita. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Any discussion among the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
F, to approve the auto renewal of ERP software support services from Tyler Technologies for Munis applications in the amount of eighty-one thousand, ninety-nine dollars, seventy-six cents for the 2019-2020 fiscal year, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Burrow, second by Mr. Barry Plazons. Is there any discussion from the board? Any comments from the audience? Not will vote. Motion passes unanimously.
G, to approve the renewal of web hosting software services with ECHO for the 2019-2020 fiscal school year in the amount of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Burrow, second by Mr. Ray Benard. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Any discussion or comments from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
H, to approve the renewal of software license support services for J Campus Student Data Applications from Ed Year in the amount of one hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars for the 2019-2020 fiscal school year, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Burrow, second by Ms. Valerie Boujwa. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Any discussion or comments from the audience? Not will vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Uh, to approve the renewal terms and pricing for disaster recovery managed services for Human Resources and Sales Task Departments from baseline data services in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars for the 2019-2020 fiscal school year, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Burrow, second by Mr. Troy Dupren. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Any discussion or comments from the audience? Not will vote. Motion passes unanimously.
J, to approve renewal terms and pricing for child nutrition payment software support service applications from Heartland School Solutions in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars for the 2019-2020 fiscal school year, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Burrow, second by Mr. Randy Schwest. Is there any discussion? Any discussion or comments from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, to award the bid for refurbished desktop computers to VIG Solutions, option B, Dell OptiFlex 7040 SFFI5, six-generation computer with a five-year warranty, including shipping, at three hundred thirty-five dollars each for IT department recommendations, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Burrow, second by Ms. Al Archer. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion amongst the audience or comments? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimous.
L, to...
What? Excuse me, Dr. Burrow, go back to J. There was a mistake in the voting. Um, count?
It's recorded. She didn't mean it to be. So maybe your vote is...
Yes.
Yes.
Same, Michelle.
Mr. Flower, I have a J for the audience. Ms. Thomas clicked on the wrong button of day instead of yea, her vote is yes on that item.
I told Ms. Thomas, it's easy to...
Yes.
Maybe it was... L, to approve the superintendent's recommendation to authorize the business manager to include a step increase to the salary schedule for the 2019-2020 fiscal year for all employees. And to also add back the one day of the employees contracted with one hundred and eighty-five plus days to the 2020 comprehensive original budget, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Burrow, second by Mr. Ray Benard. Is there any discussion amongst, among the board? Ms. Marion Petita?
I would just like to say that I'm very excited that we're able to do this. Um, it's been a long time coming and I appreciate the work that Dr. Brown did um, to try to put this into the budget. Our teachers are definitely deserving with little state raise and this. It's not a whole lot, but at least it shows our teachers that we do have their best interest and we appreciate them.
Thank you, Ms. Petita. Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Val Boujwa?
I echo that. I was going to say thank you to Dr. Brown for putting this on the agenda and having the foresight to see that it was a good thing to put in the budget and the budget could handle it. So thank you for that and I'm happy for the teachers and employees.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Any other discussion? Mr. Barry Plazons?
Of course, very well deserved. Hopefully we can continue on and get a couple more steps back. Definitely looking forward to hopefully a good outcome with future budgets and we can continue to move forward with our teachers, administrators. So again, you know, thank everyone for approving it and thank Dr. Brown for putting it up.
Any further discussion? Mr. Dupren?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to again piggyback off of my fellow board members and say thank you to Dr. Brown, but also to Mr. Don Yode, he's the man who is behind us all and making sure that we have the funds to do it. So thank you, thank you behind, thank you for that. Uh, and thank you to this board as well. I know our teachers are very deserving of this and so much more. So I look forward to the day when we can catch up on all of our past steps and give them a raise that they can truly be proud of because they are so deserving of this and so much more.
Thank you, Mr. Dupren. Any other board members? Before we do, um, a vote or act of public comment, we do have a blue card on this and they wish to speak, Mr. Blake Bogan.
Thank you, Madam President and Board. My name is Blake Bogan. I am the founding director at Racine Middle School as well as the newly elected president of the LaFouche Parish Association of Educators. Uh, we stand behind the superintendent's recommendation to approve, uh, the one-step increase, um, raise as well as the added date uh, that will go towards the one hundred eighty-five, uh, day employees. Um, when Superintendent Brown and I met in April, this was a topic of our discussion where we talked about, um, what was the future plan for, uh, the school district in, in funding the, uh, the steps so that way each employee would get back or get restored the, the steps that they had, uh, that had, that had been frozen. So, uh, I'm glad to see that this is a step in the right direction. I'm sure that many of the teachers and, uh, support staff and all employees in the school district will greatly appreciate this. Uh, we still do have a lot of work to do. But I, I will say this, that the LaFouche Parish Association of Educators would like to work with you all uh, to ensure that we can continue to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bogan, and congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion from the audience? Anybody else would like to speak or comment? Dr. Byron?
I want to thank the board for your support of this through the finance committee and hopefully successful support for it in the full board meeting tonight. As part of the budget, you know, we look at having to be fiscally responsible with holding the fund balance and, uh, we feel confident we're able to do that moving forward. Uh, but I do want to thank you for this. This is definitely something that our employees deserve.
Thank you very much. Five, approval... Oh, we got a vote. We had so many thank yous. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion passed unanimously. I would like to thank Dr. Byron. He has held his commitment on what his, um, interview was about and the things that he committed to doing as superintendent. So, um, on your path, uh, from January, you made a lot of, um, a lot of deftness that you, you campaigned on or you interviewed on, so congratulations and thank you. Five, approval of advisory committee recommendations as per meeting held Monday, June 3rd, 2019. Dr. Mary Burrow, like...
Hey, to accept the high bid in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars annually, two dollars and fifteen cents per acre from Donald Marcello for hunting and fishing privileges on Section 16 Township 20S Range 22.
Motion by Dr. Mary Burrow, second by Mr. Barry Plazons. Is there any discussion, comments from the board? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. I think if there's one thing we could add to this for the future, could we put a general location? Like this would be, uh, Golden Meadow, like near Flugee. I mean, if you just, I went and looked this up today and most people have no idea what it's in. So, just a kind of heads up, you know, I think going forward. I mean, I'm fine with this enough. Just kind of going forward.
Thank you, Dr.... Mr. Plazons? Any further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Comments? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
B, to accept the change order in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to the contract for the concrete restoration project at WS LaFouche Elementary School, so moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Burrow, second by Mr. Randy Schwest. Is there any discussion by the board? Any comment? Mr. Barry Plazons?
I don't actually have to say something. I'd like to miss the Evan Plazons, if you could, to talk about this for a second because it's just, it's a little bit too, just so everybody understands.
Okay, uh, concrete restoration work involves concrete that is spalding, okay, is basically what it is, is that you have concrete, you have rods in the concrete and it, and the rods are covered with concrete, okay? As, as concrete gets older, moisture gets in the concrete, gets a hole to the rust and rust expands, which makes the, uh, the rust pop or fall. Well, during this contract, uh, the engineer developed, we saw a crack. He bases numbers on, let's just say, a two-foot segment. In the contract, it says for the contractor to go in there and chip away and tap on the concrete to see if anything's loose. If it is loose, he just keeps on going. Then it keeps on going. All of a sudden, that two-foot piece went to four foot or six foot or twenty feet. But it's, it's important that we get in there and we do the work now. Because if, if we just shortchange the, the work that we're looking to do or to try and do, a year from now, we could have a piece of concrete that falls on our, on one of our students. And the areas that we're talking about is underneath a bus canopy in front of the school, inside the camp, inside the campus where the Wing One and Wing Two go into the cafeteria. So it's multiple areas where students, uh, pass. And that's the reason why we're asking for this. Because the con, but there again, like, like the engineers said the other night, the contractor's only going to get paid for the work that he does. So if we had ten foot in this area, but he only did two foot, well, it's all fine then. You know, it just, it just happens that we're kind of over going our, our budget right now. But we're trying to finish this part beginning of school. And in order for us to keep on moving in the process, progress that we're making, we need to try and have a little bit more money in our revenue source for the future.
Thank you for your...
That's good. I'll, if I could continue to have a little, thank you, Madam President. It's a lightweight concrete. It's not, it's not your standard concrete that you'd pull before a slab at your house. So the, the items that he's discussing become really even more advanced when it is truly a lightweight concrete. So, I mean, you have to do it right, pretty much take it down to, to what's needed and put it back together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plazons. Ms. Babin?
Um, I want to tell you thank you and also to the contractor, because I watched the meeting at like one piece of live and y'all did a really good job of explaining the process so that people that don't know much about concrete would really understand what was going on. So thank y'all for that. That was really, really well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Babin. Any further comment? Ms. Petita?
I, I would just like to say, and if not, we're just, not just for this item, but for all of the items, for the benefit of the audience and those who are watching this on Facebook Live. We had a whole bunch of finance committee agenda items and it may look like we've, you know, we're just going through them. Uh, but if, if you ever watch or come to the finance committee meetings and any of the other committee meetings, you'll see that a lot, that's where most of the work is done. And we spent much time going over all of these, so, um, I just wanted to be sure that people understand that, that we're not just voting on stuff that we're not familiar with.
Thank you, Ms. Petita. I think our Tuesday meetings lasted from six to nine fifteen. So they were pretty extensive. You, I would have to agree with you. It's where it happens. Any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. C, to consider select... Excuse... B? To con... Excuse me, new business aid. I'm down on the, uh, agenda. New business aid to take action with respect to adopting a resolution providing a canvassing, can be canvassing to the returns and declaring the results of the special education, special election held in the Consolidated School District Number One of LaFouche Parish, State of Louisiana on Saturday, May 4th, 2019, and to authorize the renewal of special taxes therein. So moved. Motion by Ms. Marion Petita. Second by Ms. Tina Babin. Um, Dr. Byron?
Yes, we have some items to read. This is in relationship to the May 4th tax mileage renewals that will pass. So bear with me because there's a portion of this that I believe to read up. Uh, this is a resolution providing for the canvassing, the returns and declaring the results of the special election held in Consolidated School District Number... held in Consolidated School District Number One of Parish of LaFouche, State of Louisiana on Saturday, May 4th, 2019, to authorize the renewal of special taxes therein. Uh, I do want to point out that tonight is the night that we are approving this. If you look in board docs, uh, on your documents, we received, uh, the documents from Foley and Judeau in terms of canvassing the election for this evening. And on the second page of the attachment, uh, we did note that they put that the meeting tonight was at 6:00 o'clock. It was reported to them and corrected by them this afternoon. And I do have the updated copy of the 7:00 PM board meeting. So we do have that in place for our bonding, uh, terms. There were four propositions. All four propositions carried. All votes set forth were filed with the officials, all with the correct dates. The results of the special election are as follows. For Proposition Number One, there was a total of 5,001 votes cast in favor of Proposition One and a total of 1,038 cast against Proposition Number One. As herein above set forth, and that it was further found and determined that there was a majority of 3,963 votes cast in favor of Proposition One. Herein above is set forth, there were 5,077 votes cast in favor of Proposition Number Two and a total of 965 votes against Proposition Number Two. As herein above set forth, and it was further found and determined that there was a majority of 4,112 votes cast in favor of Proposition Number Two, as herein set forth. There was a total of 5,224 votes in favor of Proposition Number Three and a total of 1,016 votes cast against Proposition Three, as herein above set forth. And it was further found and determined that there was a majority of 4,008 votes cast in favor of Proposition Number Three, as herein above set forth. And there was a total of 4,985 votes cast in favor of Proposition Number Four and a total of 1,041 votes cast against Proposition Number Four, as herein above set forth. And it was further found and determined that there was a majority of 3,944 votes cast in favor of Proposition Four, as herein above set forth. All of these documents are in board docs. I am, at this time, asking for a roll call vote for canvassing of the results.
Rigani in favor?
No.
Was that a roll call vote?
Oh.
Is there any discussion among the roll call vote? Any discussion among any of the four that were read and discussed? If not, would you roll call vote?
Ms. Tina Babin? Ms. Portilson?
Yay.
Ms. Cheryl Thomas? Ms. Marion Fatida?
Yes.
Dr. Mary Broke?
Yes.
Dr. Dennis Giot?
Yes.
Ms. Valerie Boujua?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler Dufrein?
Yay.
Mr. Randy Schwes?
Yay.
Mr. Barry Plazons?
Yay.
Mr. Claude Jerry Duplantis?
Yay.
Mr. Robbie Gisplayer?
Absent.
Mr. Al Archer?
Okay.
Mr. Ray Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Troy Dufrein?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. So, Mr. Tyler Dufrein would like to comment?
I just want to say thank you to the public for trusting us and for renewing these tax revenues. Um, we're going to work hard to continue making you proud, to continue growing our district, and to hopefully not just remain at number three in the state, but work our way up to number one very soon. So thank you all again for, for your trust and support in our school system.
Thank you, Mr. Dufrein.
And I'd like to thank the public as well. Response to the renew was really strong, really good, and shows a lot of, you know, confidence. And I thank everybody who went out and voted in support of our miller's union. We definitely needed that.
Mr. Al Archer?
And special thanks to you, Dr. Byron, for making an effort to go to the community, the public, and the business community, uh, reasserting that confidence and trust, gaining it in the board and making this happen too. So, thanks to you.
Anybody else? Anything further? Motion to B, to consider approving the 2019-2020 Pupil Progression Plan with recommended changes. Do I have a motion? Motion on Mr. Ray Bernard, second by Ms. Tina Babin. Any discussion? Ms. Byron?
Assistant Houseman, Dr. Byron, members of the board. The Pupil Progression Plan for the 2019-2020 school year is completely ready for submission to the State Department of Education. District supervisors began reviewing that respective sections of the Pupil Progression Plan following an initial email sent out on March 26th. Other meetings regarding the review of the Pupil Progression Plan were as follows. April 26th, Committee of Supervisors meeting. May 7th, Committee of Educators meeting and Committee of Parents meeting. May 16th, an official meeting with the Committee of Educators and the Committee of Parents. And finally, a final review of the Pupil Progression Plan, proposed changes at an open meeting held here at the School Board Office on Tuesday, May 28th, 2019. Prior to this meeting on May 24th, all board members were emailed the proposed changes for their review. On Thursday, May 30th, all board members were emailed a copy of the final PPP with all recommended revisions for a final review. The plan is due for submission to the Louisiana Department of Education on July 1st. I would like to ask the board for approval of the 2019-2020 Pupil Progression Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Duff. Is there any discussion? Mr. Ray Bernard?
I want to thank Barry for the hard work in this committee, especially not only the educators, but also the community as a whole. It's not an easy project. It comes every once in a while, and you got it more. So, congratulations on the board.
Thank you. Ms. Valerie Boujua?
I also want to thank the committees. It's a daunting task, but you guys did a great job. I looked at the recommendations and there are some very good ones.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Boujua. Any further discussion from the board? Anything from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. C, to consider selecting the Daily Comment as the official journal for the LaFouche Parish School Board for the period of July 1st, 2019, through July 30th, through June 30th of 2020. Do I have a motion? Motion by Dr. Mary Broke, second by Ms. Cheryl Thomas. Dr. Byron?
Yes, uh, you may have attached in your documents as well, quote from the Daily Comment to serve as official journal for the next year. We do have to select an official journal, but the comment is, it's a college book, intermedia, and that's.
Is there any further discussion? Any further comments from the board? From the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. D, to waive the use of facility fee associated with the use of Timon High School for the second annual Trevon Reed Celebrity Basketball Game on June 29th, 2019, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Barry Plazons, second by Ms. Cheryl Thomas. Ms. Cheryl Thomas, do you want to say anything?
Sure. So, uh, I am the one who, uh, placed this on the agenda to be done. Trevon Reed is from the community in the district which I am in. Uh, he does a lot in our community. He does a lot of charitable work, and he also worked with the kids. Uh, I am asking the board to waive the fee for his celebrity basketball game. This is the second one that he's had. Last year, it was a great success. If anybody attended, it really was. And it was a good thing for our community. It brought the community together, and I would like to see it happen more. Trevon Reed is here to speak and answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Trevon, Mr. Reed, excuse me, sorry.
Hi, y'all doing?
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Trevon Reed. I am the daughter of the Trevon Reed Foundation. It came up, uh, my mom had the cancer when I was 17 years old. And I made her a promise that when I make it big, at the time I was just dreaming, but I told her, when I make it big, I'm gonna do something in honor for you. And at the time, she was still fighting. She was on a deathbed. And that's a promise I made to her. I'm holding to it to this day. My, my foundation consists of helping, uh, single women, uh, helping cancer victims. I'm just willing to do it all. My mom passed. She was losing all her hair. That's why I have all this hair right here. And I want to donate. My thing is to donate. I just want to do everything for her. I just want to continue to make up for her.
Thank you, Trevon. Is there anything worth expression from the audience, or, I mean, questions from the board? Mr. Plazons?
Just like to say, first off, I like the commitment you're doing.
Appreciate it.
It's good for our community. It's good for our school system. I'm sure lots of kids show up. The other thing is that, you know, this is a respectable man that I actually watched you play in Timon High and against my Tigers. So, I mean, I understand what you're doing, and I truly commend what you're doing, for whether it's single mothers or, or cancer patients. And I will definitely be in favor of this, uh, to waive the fees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Mr. Ray Bernard?
Uh, yeah, it is an outstanding, uh, fundraising activity. You said that this was the second one that was done, but was this, uh, was this use of facility fee policy that waived and passed as well? Would any exceptions made to use of facility fee policy maybe pass concerning any kind of fundraising?
Yeah, on, on this one, there was, uh, the waiver of the fee that took place at the school level last year.
Okay, and was that drawn in front of the board?
No, that was not.
Okay, um, let me, let me just make this, this mistake. I truly believe in, in what, um, Mr. Reed is doing. My only concern is that, uh, it would be hard to refuse in the future from any worthy fundraising organization at any school, whether it be on one end of the body or to the other end. Um, I'm concerned about that, and I'm concerned about, uh, not, not the fact that, uh, the fundraiser is not a good one. It's a great, but I'm concerned about opening a Pandora's box that we may not be able to close. There's some discussion on, on, on my, my particular concerns. I'd like to hear from you.
Dr. Mary Broke?
I commend you also. I think that you're doing this great for the community and for the memory of your mother. I do have some concerns, um, also, the fee that we charge for use of facilities goes towards things like paying the utilities and, um, it is, it is a minimal fee. And anywhere that you go in this community, you are going to have some type of fee to hold an event. Have you, I don't know, I put you on the spot, um, but in the future, uh, or if you've thought about sponsors, uh, you know, to cover the cost of your event, you know, that could possibly be an idea, if that's something that you haven't thought about. I've had some experience with fundraising. I would be very happy to, to help you to do those kinds of things. But I do have some of the same concerns that Mr. Byron has, but I do commend you, and I think that you're doing this is really good.
Great. Ms. Fatida?
Yes, I, I agree with you on, with, um, everything that was said, that it is a noble cause and, uh, and I really respect you, Byron, mother like that, for helping in the community. But the, the board, um, has, we, we developed policies because of certain, because there was a need for it. And when you start to waiver policy, then we're setting a precedent for other organizations to approach us to ask for the same thing. And as Dr. Bro said, we, the fee is charged to help pay the cost of, for the school. But, uh, you know, I, so I just, that's my only concern is the next time someone wants to do something similar in another part of the parish, where do we stand? Do we grant that for everybody, go against policy? Or do we just automatically go back to the way we used to do it, which was a long time ago? We never, we didn't have any fees at all, or we charged a minimal fee for the use of it. But, you know, I, I, I would go along with whatever the pleasure of the board and the thoughts of the superintendent, but, um, that's my, that's my concern.
Madam President, I have a few comments I'd like to make too.
Yes, sir.
Respectfully, very grateful for your diligence and your thought in the community and as for the mother. Dr. Byron, where do we stand, uh, as far as the certificate of insurance, you all coming in?
I did get a certificate of insurance, uh, earlier this morning, you know, for, uh, for the event. I think it's there. We used to be vetted, but I do have the initial certificate of insurance.
So it has not been vetted yet, you know, they're expanding it back?
Well, it's a full policy in the process of being vetted, and I do have the certificate.
Good, okay. So, my concern is, as, as other board members have stated this evening, is the, um, you know, forego of the fees. We have somebody from the South LaFouche area, maybe south of Dulce or high or into the schools, south, central, or north, would want the same thing. And where do you draw the line? I'm just being open and honest. I was putting it out on the table. I don't want to hide or, or anything else. If we do this tonight, which is nothing wrong with it, don't get me wrong, it's fine. It's worth it. I'm for it. But where do you draw the line? So when it comes next week, next month, several months down the road, you did it for this school, what's wrong with our program for our kids too? See what I'm saying? So we have to look at it all in fairness. There's nothing wrong with this tonight. I'm not saying that, but I want to look at it from the whole spectrum, all the schools. How do you draw the barriers? The little kids versus something like this. I'm not against it, but I'm just putting this out here for us to consider, and where do we stand from those perspectives? Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Oracle. Ms. Babin?
Thank you for, for doing this, because it is a call that is very, very meaningful to different situations and experiences. My one question about this would be, um, one of these facility fees, do they come with a cost that, for example, like the janitorial services afterwards and stuff, like what do, will we have, like, what would be the cost of people coming after the fee now? Like, how does that work?
An organization that uses the facility pays for the janitorial services. Separate fund for this, and also has to provide whatever security is required as well.
Mr. Bernard?
I don't want to put this here on the spot. If there's anything you'd like to say or say? I'll turn it over. The audience will participate in this. Okay, that's it.
I have a question.
Ooh, Ms. Boujua?
Um, Dr. Bro, you said the janitorial and the security is something different than this fee?
Yes.
This is just the, the use of the facilities, not, he would still be paying for the custodians and, uh, the security?
Correct. I, I did want to ask a, a question about my, you know, just out of curiosity. I, I think it's definitely a worthy event. It was definitely successful in the city last year. I haven't seen you in a, a long, long time, but I remember being your principal back when you were in the fifth grade. I guess my question at this point is, you know, it seems that the, the board has some concerns in terms of, you know, parts of this with precedent and so forth. We also have, you know, the fact that we have some type of public building, public body that we deal with in terms of a facility. Would you be willing to? Uh, would you be willing to make a contribution back to the school? You know, following the event? You know, if the board were to waive this, you know, fee, is that something that you would be able to do that gives some type of benefit back to the school?
I don't, yes, sir.
And, and did you have something in mind that you may be able to, to offer up as making contributions back into the school?
Uh, I don't have nothing in mind right now. I mean, if kids, I work with everything, like, I do it every day, like, it's something that I, I love to do, so, I mean, I don't, I don't, whatever, whatever we come up with, I'm with it.
Anything further? Mr. Dufrin?
Madam President, I have no concerns over this. That's what we here ask the board to do. I'm in favor for it. I commend you on doing this. And when another organization comes up that wants to do something like this, that's for the community, it's good for the community, we get together and we vote on it again. Uh, if it's for personal gain, like I know Dan Srisada's used different schools, that's totally different, in my opinion. So I'm, I'm for it.
Mr. Playzons?
I, I think there's some discussion needs to be had, of course, between you and Mr. Hedo about the donation. Uh, but I'm with Mr. Dufrin as well. I think each case by case is different. I think we need to treat each one different. But there is a big picture. Because I'm gonna take a wild guess and say that people who come to this are not all from here, right? They're gonna stay in hotels, they're gonna eat in restaurants. I think everybody sees where I'm wrong with this. I mean, it's good for our area, it's good for our community, it's good for Temple Ohio, it's good for the parish. And it's a good thing you're doing, I appreciate it.
Mr. Benard?
I think there's still a lot of discussion in the board, uh, because this school has to be taken tonight. I'd like to be here with Mr. Hedo, I'd like to say him, and I'd like to give, uh, Mr. Reed out and ask if the board knows exactly what he has in mind, based on your particular suggestion.
The, uh, the event is scheduled for January, I'm assuming June, it's probably not, it's been a few weeks, so, decision, I wonder where the other, what would be made tonight?
Ms. Gia?
Madam President, um, thank you. So, I'm looking through the policy, it, it says, I know you're right now. It says something specific about proof of tax exempt status. So, do we have that? Like, that's generally, we completely waived this, this facility use policy.
We do not have a proof of tax exempt status.
Okay. So I guess what I'm asking is if we waived this, then we waived the production of that?
Correct. If you go further down into the policy, there's a section here, uh, in term, uh, that states, you know, whenever a question arises to whether a user should be exempt from paying the utility cost, which is the use of facility fee, the superintendent of school shall decide, subject to the appeal to the board. So the appeal has to come, uh, to the board.
Got it. So, and I guess what, what I'm kinda getting at is, is in the future, if we, we have people in a similar situation who want the board to consider waiving the use fee, then, you know, they provide appropriate documentation before meeting, they fill out the appropriate request form, whether we need to do that policy and procedure and modify this, to where some of those things that are somewhat unknown for us are known for us in the future. And so that way, we, we do have that ability to make a better, more educated judgment about what the intent is and what, you know, Mr. Reed's plan would be going forward. Uh, so anyway, that's my suggestion going forward. However, I, I commend you, I think it's, uh, a great opportunity. If it's well attended, again, it, it creates some opportunities for the, the community within itself, just by having it. Um, but I know in the future, I, I think we do well by creating a more structured format for a request to waive facility use fee.
Does anybody have any further comments in the board?
I'd like to say Trevon, uh, I did a lot of research, I think I read every article that the Comment, the Courier, um, put out. You had a tremendous amount of, uh, diversity amongst your crowd, as far as ages, races, religions. Um, they commented, uh, how all the kids had a great time. I did talk to some community members, I know you're actively working now on a 501(c)(3), is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, you're currently working on that and, um, you, based on the present, based on what happened last year, as, um, uh, was afforded some conversation, that is why it, it wasn't brought to this board. Is, can you speak a little bit on that and how that came about as far as you, um, putting it out there that you wanted to do a second event and, um, not coming to the board in that facet? Like, you just, because of last year's precedence, can you speak a little bit about that? How did that come about?
Um, last year around this time, I was in San Francisco, forty-nineers, and I couldn't get down here at the time. So I had, uh, I had one of my guys, who was like a manager to me. He handled all my paperwork, I was real busy with football, it was OTA, I was trying to make the team. And we got out at four o'clock over there, so that's six o'clock here, so it was closed every time, so. I mean, he, he, he did the work behind the scenes, he told me everything was good, so I thought everything was good.
And I did reach out to the hospital, I do know you visit the cancer center, I do know you deliver supplies to the, uh, the patients there and the mothers, so I did try to do my research on this. Um, and I wanna thank Ms. Cheryl for providing a lot of the information and documentation, not so much that I discovered or find out, just to know about you outside of what I read in the articles in the papers. So they were phenomenal. Um, and I commend you for moving forward, as Mr., uh, Dr. Gia said, in, um, making, taking the right preparation in, in doing so. I know Dr. Viral mentioned, uh, a donation to the school, Ms. Glenn is here. Um, schools always need a lot outside of volunteers and mentors, but, um, is there anything you had as a, something in mind that you could possibly donate to the school? I know you played football and this is a basketball event, so, uh, in my mind, I was going everywhere. I'm thinking he's gonna donate to baseball or something of that nature. But is there anything in mind that you could have thought of that, when you might have met with, um, the principal or you were at the school, that you would have known that they would have had, that they might need?
Hmm. To be honest, I don't have anything on the top of my mind right now. Like I said, I'd be willing, you know, we could talk and we could come up with something. It's, I'm with, like, I'm with whatever, like, it's for the kids, it's anything. I remember when I was a kid, I didn't have them a little bit. So now that they have someone to look up to, I'm gonna give them my time, so.
Right, so you are committed to meeting with the principal and getting together and, um, possibly donating your time along with something to the school of, of value?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion amongst the board?
I just wanna say you have made your mark.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll ask for discussion from the audience Trevon, so you can possibly sit and we may actually come back up and ask some, answer some more questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to, I just wanna thank you for giving me a chance to address the board. Uh, again, this is nothing against, personally against Trevon, I love Trevon. Trevon's one of my favorite of all times. I can promise you, I support everything Trevon does. I'm for this event, it's a great thing for the community, but I have to also think about my school. You know, doing the way the budgets are going these days and the cutting of the budgets. I'm gonna tell y'all, when I got the principal job eight years ago, my budget was near over a hundred thousand dollars. This year's operating budget was thirty-five thousand dollars. I'm running Temple Ohio, thirty-five thousand dollars, or whatever other money I can make. I do shrimp balls, I do fish fries, I do rental facilities. Again, I love this man. It's not against the whole idea, it's out the money. Just recently I had to repaint the gym. School board did not give me a penny to paint the gym. It cost me thirty-five thousand dollars to paint the gym. Awesome looking facility now. The turf football field, we had to take the dirt off of it. Instead of selling dirt nobody bought, I used some dirt to spread the field, uh, to a low area in our campus. Definitely not what I thought was gonna happen. But Mr. Playzons can tell you, thirteen thousand dollars out of my pocket, not mine, but the school's pocket, to spread this dirt. Along with the turf came, new fencing had to be done. There's another five thousand dollars out of Temple Ohio's pocket to spread that. Not counting the auditorium that we got remodeled, Temple Ohio, not the school board, Temple Ohio, but an additional twenty thousand dollars to add extra stuff to make the auditorium stay at the yard. Again, nothing against the event. I personally, you know, now they're talking donation, I'm kinda like, say, well, that's making me sound a little better. I don't want to make it sound like I'm against this event, 'cause I'm not. What I am for is for Temple Ohio High School, that has been my life. I've been in this parish now for forty years. Uh, thirty of them have been right there at Temple Ohio. And I just hate to see a startup president where other people have paid for the event. And again, I wanna keep repeating, not against the event, not against Trevon personally, 'cause I love him. It just, I have to look out for the better, that the money's at Temple Ohio. Again, my budget, the allotment has been cut drastically, fifty percent since last year. I understand all that. I appreciate the total allotment. I understand the financial buy-in, but I also know what it takes to run Temple Ohio financially. And if we waiver fees and continue to waive the fees, that puts us in a bind. And again, only to do so many shrimp balls and so many fish fries to try and raise money. Again, I thank you, whatever decision you made, I'm perfectly honest with it, I'm okay with it. I trust you to make the decisions as best. I just felt like I had to speak my mind on the situation. And again, not against Trevon personally, like I said, he's my man, I love him, man.
Mr. Reganor?
Glenn?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, uh, you know, cleared several things that I was, had in mind, but I, I know what you said came from the heart. And, uh, I, I think the key word you said was setting a precedent. And I think when we pulled today, we have to reconsider all the setting of precedents and do allowances. And, uh, I, I agree with Mr. Hedo. Mr. Reed has done nothing but made this community, uh, very proud. And, uh, the president's still, uh, very, very concerned about that. So my vote would be for that to be moved, and I do my part. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Hedo, and Mr. Benard for your concerns, and I hear everybody saying about setting a precedent. The precedent was set last year, when the fee was waived. If you wanna look at set the precedent, 'cause otherwise it wouldn't have came back to us this year. And as I did the research, I had to stumble up on that. So, he's doing the great thing. And maybe we can fix this policy, so this won't happen again, because it needs to be tweaked. It needs to be fixed. 'Cause right now, uh, it wasn't being followed. And now all of a sudden it has to be followed, unless we're gonna set a precedent. So I would think that would be an injustice. Six hundred dollars is not gonna make a break Temple Ohio high budget no kind of way. No kind of way, not six hundred dollars for a whole year. So, as a board, I think we need to fix this policy and get it right, so this won't happen again. But right now, I think it should be waived.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Dufrin?
If it wasn't, um, thank you, Madam President, if it wasn't brought before the board last year, how was it waived? How would you like this to happen?
In past prior years, the principal had some leeway with facility fees, that was back then. I was under pressure, it was still like that. He contacted me one day, I was in, I think I was in Alabama, and we talked email, uh, text message like that when we first got started. So, I was under impression that we were gonna get something as a form of donation in return. Nothing to do with any kind of thing in writing, but, or contract, whatever, but that was our discussion, under my thoughts, okay? Maybe I misunderstood what was said, but that was my original thinking. In fact, Mr. Kimball, I even expressed that opinion to Mr. Kimball, when the idea first came up for, for an event. The other thing about the facilities, in the past, lots of people have used the facility, not under my regime, but past regimes for free. AAU teams always used it for free in the past. They recently paid this past year. Uh, again, volleyball teams use it, they pay every year. My own granddaughter plays for a private team, I charged her six hundred bucks to use it. Sorry, you know? But, uh, I'm just saying that, that, like I said, it was just, obviously misunderstanding in the fee waiver or whatever. I mean, it's my fault, I'll take all the blame for it, that's not the issue right there. But I'm just saying that, you know, I, I'm just looking out for the school board to use our facilities. And again, the only one thing, I think I say, is I do understand that at this event, they're gonna give three thousand dollars to whoever's acts the wildest and craziest. If you can give three thousand dollars to one person in attendance, you can give six hundred dollars to the school. Our donation.
Mr. Playzons?
Appreciate your last comment. I mean, I guess here's the question, if you don't give it to someone who's the wildest and craziest, is it possible you to make even a larger donation than six hundred dollars? I mean, I, I'm just, I mean, just asking a question, because at the end of the day, potentially, it could be more than six hundred dollars, if, if they choose to be that way. And personally, if you do it, I think everyone needs to be in the newspaper. It's a great event, you know, it, it's a great organization, you're giving back to the school. Potentially, again, it was waived last year, we collected zero dollars. Did we collect any money last year from this? So it was waived.
No, the policy was not waived.
They waived? No, no, at the school, it was waived. It didn't come to the board, so again, they got nothing last year.
It was a violation.
Right. Again, we asking, you know, if this, keep going on the circle, you know, it is legit, question.
Mr. Al Archer?
Ms. Petita, have a hand up first, so you would, Madam President.
Yes, I'd just like to say, I don't think there's anything wrong with the policy, because, um, having been associated with our school boards for years and being in the central office, when this policy came about and then on the board, uh, this policy needed to be put in place for this very reason. The, the problem seems to be that we need to be sure that if there's a, a request for a waiver, that it comes to the board. And, um, so, you know, that's where the problem came in. So, anyway, that, that's just my thoughts, is that, and if, if it's a policy, it's in place. And if we start wavering policy, we put a weight later down the road to ask for a waiver of some other policy that we have. You know, so, let's think about that.
Can, can we have a clarity on the policy? It's not just to be waived, I understood, anybody using, using the facilities in our district needs to come up for this school, is that correct?
The, there are provisions in the policy for the fee to be waived for certain organizations, recreation support teams, and small civic religious cultural groups and so forth. There is provision in the policy that states, however, organizations shall be required to pay all school facilities fees for large functions or a fund. It's later in the policy that reads that it's subject to the appeal to the board, and there's a question to the exemption of the use of facilities fee.
Mr. Al Archer?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, the board wanna make sure we don't let this become an emotional issue. Been on this board going on sixteen years. Sometime you get sucked in, so you gotta make sure you stay out, look at it from an objective standpoint, from what's best for the district. 'Cause you can easily get sucked into something emotional and you can't think clearly and correctly. We can agree to disagree, I said this from the very beginning, I'll say it tonight, and I'll say it to the last day of this board. We not gonna agree on everything, but don't take it in a negative sense. Look at it from a professional way, civil way. If we disagree, we disagree. That doesn't mean we- That doesn't mean we still can't walk out and talk at the end. Okay? So keep that in mind. So how the way we vote tonight, we have our own vote, that's why we're board members, and our own choice. I respect yours, I mean, I respect mine, but we disagreed, we still gotta vote, we go our separate ways. On a second minute, I'll make the first donation, the one hundred dollars towards your cause. I'm gonna vote against it tonight, but I'll donate the hundred dollars towards that. One record, okay?
Thank you.
All right, I'm finished, thank you, Madam President.
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Howard. Anybody else has a comment?
I have a comment and also a question. So, I was doing some more research, and I guess I have a question about, cause I understand at the Chack Bay School, they have, they can't. So, I guess my question is, were they supposed to come in front of the board in order to hold that gate? And that, cause I know what the pair is ran by the parish. And, cause they have one that's second, which is right across the street from my house. So I'm thinking that it's the same entity that's happened this one at the Chack Bay School.
The LaFouche Parish Government has multiple summer programs that they use facilities in the parish for. And Chack Bay is a new one that they've added this year. But they weren't required to come in front of the board, I don't know. Just one there for.
Were they required to be?
I really don't know.
Dr. Bro.
Trevon, I do appreciate what you're doing. I'm not gonna be able to vote for this, but I'll donate to you tonight after.
Thank you.
Ms. Babin?
I think we all agree that it's a wonderful call. I don't think it's the course of the cause, I think it's the course of what we are concerned, which may be at the call. And I appreciate the, we agree, disagree point. Any idea that it becomes emotional? Cause this is a cause as close to everybody's heart. But again, we also need to look at it as a business decision. So, you know, that's a, that's a point. And I think that us all coming together and offering help with the, with the donations is a very good offering, a good faith to the call, to the organization.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Babin. Mr. Schwes?
Yes, Trevon, thank you for what you do.
Okay.
You have the third donation from me.
Thank you, boss.
I will vote no tonight. Cause a couple of months ago, excuse me, we decided on a name change at the school, and we couldn't help that name change. They went out for funds, and I think they got a grant to help with that. You got it for free last year, this year, average, three, three hundred dollars. And if you look at it that way. And maybe with Dr. Bro said, if you look at some donations, supplement that fee for further, it'd be great.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Mr. Dupren?
May I ask, how much does it cost for a child to attend?
What? Trevon?
How much does it cost for a child to attend?
Five bucks.
And Trevon, if a child cannot afford it, how is that handled? Or do you know of anybody that can, that has not been able to come in, or that the community has not supported?
Uh, it has some single mothers who I'm supporting, who can't afford it. I tell them, come meet me, and I would get them in. My whole thing is this, I think this, this is bigger than the fee. Like, I'm really, I don't really wanna help the kids. If I gotta pay the fee, I'll pay the fee. I just wanna help the kids. That's all I'm for. It's, it's times where, and I heard someone speak on the, the three thousand dollar giveaway. The three thousand dollar giveaway really going to a single mother, and it's not from me. It's from my fellow teammate Greg Robson. And he said, he don't do things in the community, because as the number two overall pick, he don't get no love in his own city. Like, we go walk through Tybalt, we don't see a picture, we don't see a jersey, we don't see anything, of me or Greg. And for me, when, when I was in the NFL, and they asked me, what do I wanna put when they say my name? I ain't say Auburn University, I say Tybalt High School. Cause that's where I'm from, that's what I represent. And when I come home, and I walk through there, and I don't see a picture, my name, I left some banners, it was my All-American banners, I was the first All-American ever at Tybalt High. I walk in the gym, now they gone. Someone stole. So, it's like, we dishing out this love, but we not getting any love back. But it don't even faze us, because we doing it for the kids anyway. So, I'm gonna continue to do it for the kids, with or without the fee. I'm gonna continue to fight for those kids.
Trevon, I'm gonna vote for it, because I don't believe a person should be able to, should be the president of any policy. I believe a policy should be set and followed. I don't believe any person should be alienated or highlighted in regards to, we gonna make sure this policy is implemented for this person. As a board, I understand, so I'm sharing my views on it, so I will vote for you. Cause I don't believe you should be highlighted, and we gonna make an issue of this, of Trevon Reed, and that's how I see it. I believe moving forward as a board, if we're gonna do the policy, we're gonna do the policy and hope to it. But it won't be because we made a highlight of Trevon Reed. That is how I feel.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Mr. Plazos?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll vote for it as well, regardless of the passes, the rest of the three hundred dollars, I'll be in.
Thank you.
Anything further from the audience? Ms. Thomas?
I just wanna thank you, Trevon, for coming. I wanna thank you for all you do. And if nobody else see you, I see. And I will always see you, and you will always be in the spotlight, cause I will make sure that you're there.
Thank you.
There's nothing further, let's vote. Five yeas, nine nays, motion fails. Seven memorial resolutions. Eight, Mr. Robert Brogie, retired teacher. Ms. Tina Babin?
Mr. Robert Brogie was hired by the LaFouche Parish School Board on January fourteenth, nineteen sixty-five, as a teacher at East Tybalt Junior High School. Mr. Brogie also taught at the LaFouche Parish High School, South Tybalt Junior High School, Tybalt High School, and the Juvenile Justice Center. Mr. Brogie retired on May thirty-first, nineteen ninety-one, having served in the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-five, twenty-five years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
B, Ms. Joan Melisong, retired teacher. Ms. Mary Petita?
Ms. Joan Melisong was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-seven, as a teacher at Central LaFouche High School. Ms. Melisong also taught at Raceland Junior High School. She left the system on August twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty. Ms. Melisong was rehired on August twenty-second, nineteen ninety-five, as an itinerant ESL, English as a Second Language teacher. Ms. Melisong retired on December seventeenth, twenty-ten, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of seventeen point five years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recognize this Allison Tosan, Mr. Brogie's daughter.
Alicia. The granddaughter, she too. Thank y'all for coming. C, Ms. Lorraine Landry, retired teacher. Mr. Dennis, Dr. Dennis Gion?
Ms. Lorraine Landry was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August first, nineteen sixty-three, as a teacher at Shaktow Elementary School. Ms. Landry left the system in June first, nineteen sixty-four. Ms. Landry returned to our district on August first, nineteen seventy-six, as a teacher at East Tybalt Junior High School. Ms. Landry also taught at Tybalt High School during her career. Ms. Landry retired May twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-two, having served the LaFouche Parish School District a total of seventeen years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
C, Ms. Manny Robinson, teacher. Ms. Mary Petita?
Ms. Manny Robinson was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August fifth, two thousand nine, as a teacher at Raceland Lower Elementary School. On August third, two thousand eleven, Ms. Robinson transferred as a teacher to South, St. Charles Elementary, excuse me, Elementary School. Ms. Robinson passed away on May twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. She served in the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of ten years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Ms. Boucho?
I just wanna say that, a hard lady. She was a great teacher, Teacher of the Year a few years ago. She wouldn't have believed in this.
Thank you, Ms. Boucho. I knew I was there the Monday at the school with Dr. Byron and their staff, and they all had their time to mourn, and their time to tell funny stories about her. Their time to talk about her teaching, their time to talk about her children. I didn't know Manny when she was Teacher of the Year, met her at the Left Banquet, but I got to know her so much through her, her colleagues and her coworkers. They prayed together, but most of all, they, they were joyed with her presence when she was at her school and worried about her children. And I'm sure Dr. Byron could expand on that a little.
It was a tough day at St. Charles that morning. It was, of course, you know, tragic, you know, issue that occurred. But her spirit still lives within that school, and all the kids that she touched, her family as well. She's outstanding, everybody prayed for her family.
E, Ms. Linda Cook, school janitor. Michelle Thomas?
Ms. Linda Cook was hired by the LaFouche Parish School Board District on June first, two thousand four, as a school janitor at East Tybalt Middle School. Ms. Cook's passed away on May thirty-first, and she served the LaFouche Parish District for fifteen years. I know Linda since she was a child. She was my church member, and they could be buried in her, so she has small child parents. And I'm sure maybe some of y'all will have. So it's just really sad. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Ms. Linda, used to come here, just about every day doing the free mail. Another very, you know, just, I can't think of another word, a tragic situation, you know, that occurred. She smiled a lot, definitely brought a lot of joy to people that she saw on the side. She would miss being there as well.
Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent, and will be reported on a special page of our minute book. Eight, ten of the dates, excuse me, I'm sorry.
With steer up, with approval, approval of the board. We have Mr. Pat Enby here today, I believe, with his father. And with the approval of the board, maybe he could give us a quick legislative update on the reduction of the board in fifteen to nine. In addition, we have Mr. Ronald Perry, I know is the spearhead of this, of this legislative movement. With the approval of the board, we, we are not taking any action on this, all we're doing is simply gathering information.
Absolutely. Possibly that can be done on announcements with your approval, after the introduction of administrators?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Benard. Ten of the dates of future meetings. A, Policing Procedure Committee, Monday, May, Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Academics Committee, Monday?
Monday, Monday.
June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Landing Facilities Management Committee meeting, Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Superintendent's Evaluation Committee, Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Finance Committee meeting, Wednesday, June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. F Transportation Committee meeting, Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. G Advisory Committee meeting, Monday, July first, two thousand nineteen. And H, Regular Board meeting, Wednesday, July third, two thousand nineteen. Nine announcements and adjournments. Eight announcements, the introduction of new administrators. Dr. Byron?
Yes, we have a couple of newly appointed administrators in the district. I'd first like to introduce Ms. Amy Angle, who will be Assistant Principal at CM Washington Elementary School.
Good evening. Superintendent Byron, Supervisory Staff, and members of the board. I want to thank you so much, wholeheartedly, for this opportunity. I wanna thank my husband, Jonathan Sergeant Angle, who happens to be our security tonight. And I want to thank members of my leadership team, who have been supportive along the way, and share the same vision as I do. We are so excited for the upcoming school year. We have big plans, big plans. Our goals are to grow academically, and to really reach out to the community, so we can become a school community and a school leader. And I wanna leave by saying that at CM Washington, we have panther pride.
And newly appointed Assistant Principal at South Tybalt High School, Ms. Jessica LeBlanc.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Byron, and thank you to the board, and Mr. Kimball, and Ms. Bill, and Ms. Sheramy. And Ms. Ann Rivera is here as well. I look forward to working with the faculty and staff at South Tybalt High School. It's an exciting time for them, they're off to be recognized this month as a premier school. And I'm very excited to work with the faculty and staff and join this awesome administrative team. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Mr. Dupren?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna say that I had both the honor and pleasure of having both of those women as teachers while I was in school many years ago. And Ms. Amy Angle was my eighth grade reading teacher, and I'll never forget studying the House of Dyed Drew. She made it very fun and interesting. And Ms. Jessica LeBlanc was not only my Biology one teacher, but my Biology two teacher, and Anatomy and Physiology teacher. She couldn't get rid of me, cause I follow her to Central Panus DMC. But if these two women do a job like they were as teachers, as phenomenal teachers, I know that our school's in really good hands. So I'm very proud that we elected two wonderful, deserving women to represent our school, this district, in this capacity.
Thank you, Ms. Dupren, that's very nice. Anybody else?
One more comment, President Pramay. Not only is Mr. Perry here tonight, former board member, but is that Mr. Jeff Tocloin, Ms. Betty? No, it was a tip looking in the back, wasn't she, that was there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Orchard. Anybody else have any further comments?
So, being that Mr. Ravenard decided to put Mr. Pat Amadei on the spot?
Well, thank you all, and I'm certainly pleased to be here. I think I have a very good news for you. Of course, you know, when you're in Baton Rouge and you watch the process, it's unbelievable and illogical, and you really don't know how, you know, they said that you didn't make sausage, it's better not to see it made. The latest is, I know I sent an email to all of you to let you kind of know what was going on. The bill was on the Senate floor, and there was a concern that a senator or group of senators had. So, in my conversation with Representative Justler, who I just want to let you know has been magnificent throughout all of this, and he has stayed on top of this. And then on the Senate side, Senator Chabert as well, really doing all the work necessary to get the bill passed. Well, anyway, I get a call from Truck, and he says, you know, it looks like we're gonna have to strip the bill and put in an amendment to account for a concern that one of the senators or group of senators had. But it's okay, it's gonna be fine, we think we've got it. So, the way they drew it up is that it allows a board between a population of 90 and $100,000, $100,000 population, to reduce its size to, or worse to that effect. When we saw that, we said, well, you know, that's great, but we have a bit of a concern, because LaFouche Parish may be, in the next census, we may actually exceed 100,000. The 2010 census, we were at 96. The 2017 estimated population was 98.5. So, we talked about it, and we said, this would be ridiculous for us to pass a bill that doesn't, that we can't even, or we fall outside of. But they did it quickly at the Senate, and so I think that's why they used this 90 to 100. So then, when we had conversations with Truck and with Norby, they both agreed, yeah, well, we probably need to bump it up to 105. So, what happened was the amendment comes back to the House side, the Senate amendment comes to the House side, they reject the amendment, so it then has to go to Conference Committee, with three members of the Senate, three members of the House. The three members on the House side are DeRichard, Truck, and the chairman of the Education Committee, Senator Landry, who supported, Representative Landry, who supported the bill. And on the Senate side, it is Norby, Senator Ward, she's the chairman of the Education Committee, and another senator, I don't know who that is. But we know that five of them, of the six that are meeting, five of them are supporting our bill. I don't expect there's going to be any issue. I think it will come out of the committee at 105. It then will be voted on in both the House and the Senate, and we expect that the bill will be approved. Then, once that is approved, we wait on the census, we make sure we're, you know, in that 105 to 90 population range. You all will have to then vote to reduce your size, and when the reapportionment comes around, you will then, you know, get a reapportionment plan that meets the Voting Rights Act, and also is the size that you vote. So that's the plan. The bill, legislation recesses tomorrow, so they're done tomorrow, so this is gonna happen fairly quick. We'll know for sure, and we'll be able to report some concern to you by the end of the day tomorrow.
Can I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What if we did that census, then resolve their numbers, over to 105, what happened?
Well, we probably have to go back, then to change the parameters again. Now, that would be not a good idea. I mean, you know, we certainly want to get it right. So, what is happening is, the Senate staff has the latest data, and they're telling us what they think the parameters ought to be for LaFouche Parish. So that's the best information that we're gonna have at this time. So I think we have to rely upon that, and, you know, we'll cross the fingers and, you know, pretty least confident that we'll. Any questions?
Mr. Benard?
Yeah, census is done every 10 years, so, once we get it, we don't have to worry 10 years from now if in fact the population will go down. In other words, when you make the change, you can always stay at the size that you vote on. You don't, but in order to change your size, I think this is gonna be a very specific bill that's gonna amend 72, gonna add a subpart D. I, you know, again, not sure how to make the sausage. Why that went down that road, and why we came after all that we did to get it to where it was, and then at the 11th hour, they kind of take a 90 degree turn on us. And it is what it is. And my, again, conversations with both Senator Chabert and particularly Representative Justler, we both agree, well, whatever it takes, if it's done, we're gonna do. And then, it would have benefited other parishes, the way we had originally done this. And again, the school board support, the school board association support on the bill going again, because they saw need as well for other school boards across the state. And it just somehow got, the word that someone used was it got hijacked on the Senate floor. So, I won't tell you.
Anything further for Mr. Amade?
What about the oil royalties through Lake Rock City? How, where's that?
Okay, so, again, another one of those crazy journeys that this bill was on. We were added to House Bill 392, which was the supplemental appropriations bill. So, supplemental appropriations bill is, we have some extra money, the state has some extra money, I think it was about $120 million, and how do we spend that money? And we had to lobby, literally lobby, the members of the House Ways and Means Committee, and Henry Belton, who is the chief cook and bottle washer for the school board in the legislature, did just that, and convinced the chairman of the Ways and Means, Cameron Henry, to put it on the supplemental appropriations bill, with great support as well from Beryl Amade, I might add, and the rest of the delegation. I mean, we had lots of folks that were supporting this behind the scenes. So we got it on the supplemental appropriations. It goes to the Senate side, and some other school boards that were kind of newcomers said, well, you know, they owe us oil and gas royalties too. So, there was a compromise, the governor wanted to, he wanted, you know, have more money to pay the teachers' salary increases, to be quite frank with you, and also to make sure that the MFP was increased by, I think, 1.375%. So, there was a tug of war on this extra money, as I appreciate it. Again, I'm standing on the sidelines, trying to sort through all of the madness that goes on there. Our legislative delegation was able to hold on to about $580,000 of the original 2.6 million. So, we are gonna get a piece of the pie, which, you know, is better than, obviously better than nothing, you know, we're happy to get something from the state, but it means that we will have to go back again. And we'll have to get the rest of our, it will now be $2,020,000. Or $2,080,000, and we think we're gonna get about, no, $580,000, I was right the first time. The last email I got from Senator Garrett Smith, who also has been very helpful in all of this, he said, we think he got, we think we got you locked in at $580,000. So, but, you know, it still has to go through the final approvals, and it goes to the.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah, about parameters, if our population increases, then the number, is it left up to us, or is the state automatically going to do this? And if it does it for us, do they do it for Bear Bombs and the Jeffersons, who have more than $105,000, but have nine board members?
No, this will just give you a way to change your size, or reduce your size, if you are within this. In other words, they, you know, the original bill would have applied to every school board in the state of Louisiana, which would have given them the authority to reduce their size. And we just literally struck out one line of a statute, which I think, when I said, you can either increase your size, or you can remain at the same size, whichever is the greater. Well, of course, LaFouche has already had 15, because we were between, you know, you can change your size to between 5 and 15 under that statute. And when we presented that to LSDA, the School Board Association, they go, yeah, that's a great, that's a great bill, because we got school boards out there that, you know, would have, St. Mary's, for example, I think tried to do this several years ago, but were faced with the issue of whether or not they could do it by local and special law, and whether or not they needed a constitutional amendment, and so on and so forth. So after conversations with Representative Justler, he said, well, what if we could do something a little bit different that impacts all school boards, and we can do it in that form and fashion? And that was fine. When it was in the Senate floor, there was a push to constrict it again, so that it wouldn't apply to all schools in the state, only to those that limited the population of LaFouche Parish. So then we had to, then what they come up with are the parameters, which they believed to be the foundation parameters at the time. So, we encouraged them to expand it, so that we don't miss the target. So, that's where it is right now. So we think, we think we're good. I don't think you have to move out of the parish yet, to get a nomination.
Is there anything further? Yes, ma'am.
We, the grant was approved from the Lorian Foundation for CM Washington, and we had more than enough, I think it was gonna cost $13,000, and they ran it up $50,000. All Ms. Johnson and everybody who had everything, Ms. Petita, everybody who had something, and I really appreciate your work.
Thank you for that announcement, Ms. Thomas, very nice.
As for President, I would like to thank every board member who has spent time on this reduction deal. We took oath on January 9th, and on January 12th, I believe, the phones started ringing, and everybody was up. So from the time that we were, we sat on this board, it's been ready, set, go on this issue. May 7th, they presented to the House Education Committee, and I know we had four board members that attended, Mr. Tyler Dupren, Mr. Robbie Justler, Mr. Ravenard, and Ms. Mary Petita. Ms. Mary Petita and Mr. Robbie Justler testified in front of the House Education Committee. I'd like to thank all of you for attending and representing this school board, along with Dr. Viron and Mr. Amade. Again, that was May 7th, May 30th, it was in front of the Senate Education Committee, as Mr. Amade stated, and I know Mr. Justler spent an excess with Dr. Viron of seven to eight hours, or possibly longer, waiting for the Senate to come out of full session and into committee. So, long hours have been spent by several of the board members, whether it be on the phone, in Baton Rouge, speaking to each other, one-on-one. So thank y'all all for the effort that everybody's given, and the support that everybody's had. And Mr. Perry, I'd like to thank you. You've probably been the biggest cheerleader of this endeavor, or this reduction, however you want to say it. So, thank you for always being there, and thank you for always being a voice. Very much appreciated.
It could have happened 10 years ago.
Is there anything further, any further announcements? All righty, if not, we are done.